Very good. I think we got the red light. Well, good evening. Thank you very much for turning out tonight. My name is Mark Lee and I'm an architect with Herrmann. We're a firm that's been around for about 150 years and we really specialize in community buildings and particular schools. And so that's where I spend a lot of my time is in school environments. And so we're pretty excited to be involved with the city of Nashua on this project, the middle school projects. We had the pleasure of working on two previous projects, the Broad Street School and the Sunset Heights School. So we're somewhat familiar with the community and some of the facilities in the district. With the Herrmann group tonight is my colleague Lisa Sawin, Jamie Willett, and Emily Watt. And so thank you very much. And we have some other folks with the district. And so those folks can stand up or raise your hand. So we've got Sean, Donna, Assistant Superintendent. We've got Sharon, Ian, Principals, folks we have here. We have Chairman of the Joint Special School Board, Richard Dowd. Am I forgetting anyone? Yes.
President for Alderman Jettie.
I'm sorry, absolutely. Thank you very, very much. And Alderman Jettie as well. Thank you very, very much. So we've got a brief presentation we're going to go through tonight. And it's a little bit of an overview of the project, a little bit of an understanding of what makes middle schools, middle schools, and what we think about when we're designing middle schools. And then we're going to put you folks to work, which is our, that's when we get to enjoy coming to these things because you folks are the ones that are on the spot for participating. So I don't know if you all knew that, but you've got some work to do tonight. So we're pretty excited about that. So just a quick overview of the items we're going to cover. We've got an introduction about the project and why we're doing the project, a schedule overview, so you can understand where we are in this exercise or in the process of the middle schools project. And then we're going to get into 21st century learning environments and Lisa will take us through some of that. Then we get into the design, community engagement exercise, and we'll talk a little bit about next steps. So this is the mission statement for the district. And it's important, I'm not going to read it word for word here, but I think it helps us understand in some ways a starting point, that mission statements and vision statements really help ground us in really what's important. And as we think about projects, we're not just thinking about the spaces and the walls and all the technology in a building, but we're really thinking about why we're doing this. And so it's really about the learning environment first and foremost. And that means it's about cognitive development, it's about social emotional learning, and it's also about safety and security. Why are we undertaking the study of the middle schools? And we want to make it clear that this project really is looking comprehensively at the middle schools, all three of the existing. There's an emphasis on the condition of this facility, Elm Street, being the one that's probably in the worst condition, but we're really looking comprehensively at all of the middle schools in terms of understanding how they work to support the learning that you're doing at that age group. And so right now, the facilities of the Elm Street Middle School is the condition of it's really what's pushed the project, the middle school projects to the point of reviewing them right now. But as I suggested, we're looking at the condition of all of the middle schools, not just how they're supporting learning, but we're also taking a step back and saying, what is their condition, not only to support learning, but also just their physical condition of the buildings and their systems. And so, and if there are changes, and we don't know if there are or aren't, and we're not going to get into a big discussion about what we might do for changes. Tonight is really about listening to the community and understanding what it is that you folks value in your learning environments and your schools. And that's really, tonight's us listening to you about the middle schools and how they serve your community. And then from the analysis that we're doing, and we're looking at the educational programming, we're looking at the facilities, and we're going to then start to make recommendations. Those recommendations will happen throughout the summer and then it'll be a report to the Joint School Board, and then they'll make a recommendation to move forward with what the projects will be. At that time, we'll come back and share with community more about what the potential projects will be. So tonight's a little bit about listening, and then when we come back again to talk with folks, probably in the fall, we'll really share a lot of information about what the study found and what the proposed changes might be to your middle schools. So the three steps that we're in right now are the study piece. That's kind of what's going on. And we've been involved since last fall and some of the late fall, looking at some of the building systems. So we're looking at the facility analysis, we're looking at the educational program, and then from that, we're going to start looking at concept designs, what we might do. And then all of this doesn't happen in a sort of a context without funding. And so it's really important to think about equity and how we're expending funds, not only for potential projects for Elm Street, but really thinking about the budget in totality and not only just construction costs, but operating costs and that the taxpayers of Nashua have to consider moving forward too. So those are all considerations that we'll look at as we undertake the study. Once that study concludes and recommendations move forward, those will then be confirmed and we move then into the actual design process. So the first one is just imagining what the project might be. The next piece of it is really designing how the walls are constructed and how the roof is constructed and all the different parts of what we're doing. So that design piece happens winter 2020 to, or spring 2020 to winter 2020. So that happens next year, next calendar year. And then once we're done with the design, then we turn it over to the contractor. And I think I just saw the contractor, Carl Dubois, come in from Harvey Construction. And so then Carl takes it and actually starts the construction. And so right now, we have the construction tentatively starting in the spring of 2021 and running through 2023. So those are all tentative dates for the most part, but it gives you a sense of how this thing happens. It takes a little while to get from where we are now to a finally completed project. During all that, we want to make sure that we're communicating and we encourage folks to look at, to the school district's website to see links to this project. And so as we move forward, you'll see information materials being presented on there. Tonight's presentation will also be included on that as well. This is kind of a flow diagram that's a little chopped off at the top, but if you could read the top, it would say it's a facility analysis. And that encompasses the different things that we're looking at. We're looking at traffic studies around all of the three middle schools. We're looking at the site in terms of its physical features to support any potential changes, whether it's circulation of cars and buses on the site or if it's an addition to the building, how does the site support those? The geotechnical exploration is part of that too, understanding the soils and their suitability for some of those items that we just talked about. Looking at what is, may still be in the buildings for hazardous materials. And so that's really driving, and then we go through and we do, and we have actually walked through all the buildings to look at all their systems, the mechanical systems that heat and cool the building, the electrical systems, the technology systems, communication systems, all of those, we've gone through and identified their deficiencies and inventoried those for the building committee. The next thing we've done also is looked at educational program. We're actually still in this a little bit, but we actually have gone through and met with the educators. We've looked at your existing spaces, we looked at where the deficiencies in those spaces are. We thought about what it would mean for different configurations of populations at the different middle schools, and that's one of the considerations we're looking at. What if they became a little more equalized instead of having one big one here at Elm Street? And so we're starting to understand that through the educational programming. And then that helps in terms of thinking about also what programs we would like to have that we don't offer now either because we don't have the space or the space isn't suitable for that, for what we'd want to have. So then from that, we'll then get into the concept design. That's when we actually start thinking about what the building might look like and how it might lay itself out or building projects. And then, as I said, then all that moves through a cost analysis, both the construction cost, which Harvey will help us figure out, as well as the operating cost for this. And we'll be able to tell, here's what you spend now, here's what it would look like with new construction with sustainable or energy efficient features. So with that, we're going to, any questions on the schedule, I guess, and some of the features of the study before I turn it over to Lisa, who's going to kind of talk a little bit about what we think of when we're designing middle schools in the 21st century? Very good. Lisa.
Thanks, Mark. So we're going to spend a little bit of time just going over what we're seeing in schools today. So 21st century best practices in middle school design. Schools have seen a lot of evolution and really looking at best practices in particular to middle schools. Some of the top ones that we've selected are learning communities and art, music, performance, STEM STEAM labs, social emotional learning, learning commons, flexible space, the interconnectedness between transparency, outdoor connection, and natural light, and welcoming entry. And so we're going to go into a little bit of description on what each of these are and then show you different examples of what these spaces and design strategies look like. Some of them, we're going to look at them as individual and there'll be some spaces where you start to see them kind of come all together. Starting with learning communities. So learning communities are really important in middle school design. Middle school is handling a lot of transitions for students. Not only are they at an age where they're going through a lot of transitions, but they're transitioning from the elementary school model to the middle school model. It's where they are starting to foster independence, but they also are coming from a school where it's a one-on-one relationship with a teacher. That's their world. That's their home base. And now they're starting to go into a world where they're rotating between teachers. That community of theirs is getting larger. And this is the spot where you start to foster that independence so that they are ready to go to high school to where the community is even larger. So when we talk about learning communities, it's about the idea of small learning communities. So if you think of a school as a series of neighborhoods, and each neighborhood has a small learning community. So that is where a student would have their math teacher, their English teacher, social studies, science, and then they would have shared spaces that make up that community. So it'd be administration spaces, maybe toilet facilities, but also project spaces to where they can come together as either the team or small pieces of the team to work on projects together. So a lot of emphasis on project-based learning. Art, music, performance. So really making sure that you have adequate spaces to house those subjects, but really art also having the flexibility to be the, to be a space that supports the arts, not only inspirational, but also have different areas within the room and access to different materials to really be able to do project-based learning in the art studio. And we talk about performance, we're not talking about an auditorium, but more spaces, impromptu spaces where students can pull off and do small presentations with groups, really work on those soft skills of communication and collaboration. STEM STEAM labs is where it all really comes together. So it's taking all those different subject matters and really working on life skills and using science, technology, engineering, sometimes art and math. So that means being able to have access to what you would see in sort of a science lab, which is sort of more of having your water, having different lab tables, but flexibility around that, but also having places to where you can really innovate and be creative and messy, but also having spaces within there to think and access technology. Social emotional learning. This is really where we look at the 21st century soft skills, communication, collaboration. These are things that we use every day in our professions. And so looking at areas where the kids can learn from experts, but also learn from peers, but also learn from themselves. And so those take different forms in regards to space. Learning commons is what we refer to as a library these days. So this idea of the learning commons is no more about one big space where everybody has to be quiet because we're reading. It's a large space that has many different spaces within it, and some areas are quiet, some are loud, some are messy. It's really about having access to different ways of learning. Flexible space, it's sort of an overall scheme that we're seeing throughout schools, making sure that we can adapt as things change. The future's unknown, so being able to have spaces that can be larger or smaller, open up to one another, having movable furnishing. Transparency is about putting education on display so that people can see other people learning, being able to have transparency, to be able to see outside. Outdoor connection, inherently, we all are beings that want to be outside. And so really being able to have that connection to the outdoors, not only visibly, but physically. So we see a lot of outdoor learning taking place where the classroom can physically go outside, but also providing opportunities to where we can learn from nature. And then natural light is, there's a bunch of articles written on just how natural light really creates high performance. We all, our well-being is based on how much natural light we see in a day. So making sure that we have natural light in all the learning spaces. And then welcoming entry is one of those that is really about the community and making sure that the entry is welcoming, that the community feels that this is also their school, that they're welcome to come in. At the same time, we balance safety and security, but really it sets the tone for the whole school and the connection to the community. So I'm going to go through a couple of examples of what these look like. So this would be a learning community. So the classrooms are clustered around an open space where you might do project-based learning, come together in small groups, large groups. We have self-contained special ed programs as part of this small community, maybe a literacy room, or sometimes we'll see administration spaces to where the teachers, that's their professional space, so when they're not in class, there's still eyes on that community space in the middle. And then different varieties of spaces, maybe small group rooms where they can pull off one-on-one or a small group of students can work on a project, and always trying to have the connection to the outside as well. Here's an example of a middle school in Situate, Massachusetts. So around the perimeter, you have the classrooms, you have a small group room that overlooks the learning commons. And so this is where they can get a group of students together here with a teacher, with a place to write. Over in the back wall, there's technology, which I think is better illustrated in this photo, but you can see the young woman working on a project. This was actually after school, working with the technology, and her teacher was right inside this classroom here. And so they were back and forth a lot together. When this space was activated with several classes and we were here, this door was open and none of the students were distracted. They were so used to the transparency at that point that they were focused on what the teacher was saying. They had voice enhancement within the space, so every student could hear the teacher at any room, any spot in the room. And this was shared with another room next door that had a dividing wall. So they constantly were opening that room to do shared lessons between the two classrooms, and then groups of students would come out here to work on individual projects. Natural light is incorporated through a skylight, so there's another story above this that has a similar setup, and then it has an opening in the floor. So they have that visual connection between the teams on different floors, but you also get the natural light. This is another example, West Bridgewater Middle High School in Massachusetts. And this was their learning commons. There's classrooms behind all of us here, and then this was their administration space that was a workroom to when the teachers were working there. They could have visibility with the students, but the students also knew that they were accessible there too. So if they needed to work with them to get extra help, they were available. So art, art spaces, making sure that we have a great connection to the outside, great natural light, but also the flexibility to really work on a variety of different media. We can see here that there's a ceramics area, there's access to all the different materials for the students, there's power overhead, so they really can be fairly mobile within the space. And then making sure that students work, there's dedicated spaces for display of student work throughout the school, so really celebrating the work that the students are doing. The idea of a STEM or STEAM lab. So this is the concept of really looking at the interconnection, interconnection or synergy between all the different subjects and really creating those real-life experiences for students. And so this diagram here shows what they call the active lab. So just think of a science lab with the perimeter of having your sinks and your lab tables and then movable lab tables in the middle. So a little bit more formal setting, and then an area to really get away from the project, maybe have a comfortable seat, think about when you're reading a book and kind of doing more of that one-on-one thinking and learning, or maybe with individuals to really strategize on things and discuss what you're working on. And then in between, you have the work on display or that area where there really are no limits. You can be as messy as you want, you can be innovative, but you still have, whether it be the technology or the materials that you need to explore different subject matters. And then a lot of times, having that connection to the outside so you can work on projects outside. And storage is really important in this because there's a lot of materials. And so here's an example, Wentworth Intermediate in Scarborough, Maine. And so this is the STEM lab. You can see the perimeter setup here, the movable lab tables, and then the outlets overhead. And then there's another space over here that's a little bit, that is flexible, can be used for instruction, or it can also be a project area. So going from STEM and STEAM into more of the social and emotional learning. So really having those spaces to where kids can practice socialization, they can practice communication, collaboration. And there's really three major areas that we start to see these spaces categorized in. We refer to them as the campfire space, so really learning from an expert. We hear, the other space is the watering hole, so really learning from your peers, or the cave, which is learning from yourself, so a more intimate space that you can pull off and learn from yourself. So this space would be kind of categorized as two things. This is in West Bridgewater Middle High School, and it would be seen as a campfire space, but also a water hole, watering hole, I'm sorry. There, on the wall that you can't see across from the students is a presentation screen. So they can do performances here, they can do presentations, somebody can give a lecture. It's also their cafeteria, so it's a really flexible, multipurpose space. In between classes, this is how the stairs use all the time. Kids are peeling off with their peers, they're learning, they're sharing stories, they're sharing experiences. So this is a great example of both a campfire and watering hole. Another example, so we're seeing these a lot in schools today. Again, for the flexibility, instead of lecture halls, we're seeing this more and more because the cafeteria isn't used all the time. And so it allows them another use for that, for that space. And this would be an example of a cave space. So an idea, a space to where you can kind of peel off by yourself or maybe with one other person and really do quiet learning and creative thinking. Here's another example of ones, that would be this space over here, somewhere where you can kind of have the semi-enclosure in what is more of an open space. So the learning commons. The learning commons, again, is where a lot of these spaces all start to come together. So you have the variety of all these different spaces. In the middle, so to walk through the diagram, this would be in this diagram where the help desk is. They have small group rooms and instruction spaces off of there. There is a teaching space where a teacher could bring in a class and do a lesson, as well as a project space, so access to materials. So while you're either in the learning commons doing research on the computer or getting a book, you can start to experiment with some of those ideas in different ways, trying to approach learning differently because everybody learns in different styles. So here's an example at Wentworth Intermediate School. And so the variety of spaces, they have these really great, you know, movable soft seating to where the kids can move them around and create their reading nook where they want, or they can sit along the window seat here. This also is the presentation area, so there's a screen that comes down here, they can work in small groups. Behind us are all the different group rooms, and at the end is their maker space. So they actually have a sink and counter and overhead power as well. This is in South Portland, this is the library or learning commons. So this is where you can start to see the teaching space and then with the small group rooms off of that as well. And here's another one, a little bit younger age group, but the nice thing about this is you start to see these little inviting pockets to where kids feel more comfortably being quiet and reading a book instead of a big open space where they're being told to be quiet. So this is a semi-enclosed space, all of these color boxes, and then even more enclosed space in the cave space in the back. And another example of learning commons as well. Again, just a variety of seating, variety of spaces, technology in all of them. So this image starts to look at the interconnection of transparency, daylight, connections to nature. These can all be looked at individually, but you start to really see them overlapped in many areas. And so again, the daylight having, all the natural daylight and the connection to outdoors really makes this a really welcoming and inviting space, but it's also a very calming space because you have that connection to the outside. And so this is a connector at an elementary school between the library and the gymnasium in the back, which started to create an enclosed courtyard between the classroom wing. It also becomes a place where the kids can go out and learn from nature and connect with nature, but also becomes a protected outdoor space. So it's really enclosed by multiple sides of the building. Here's another example of the transparency and the daylight and connections to nature. So this is the West Bridgewater School where we saw that red stair. The red stair is off to our left, or to our right, I'm sorry. And this is the connection or the view out to their courtyard. So it also becomes an outdoor learning space. They have their STEM lab that opens out there, as well as the cafeteria that spills out. And then this is an example of connections to nature, outdoor learning, so really exploring nature, exploring whether it be natural paths and how they connect into the landscape of the building, or having instructional space outside as well. So then move on to welcoming entry, really making it so that the community feels welcome in this community facility. And not only is it welcoming inside, but outside as well, so as you approach the building, this is a place that you belong and that you want to go to. And then examples of the interior of different welcoming entries, the introduction of natural light, high volumes, whimsical sculptures, inspiring quotes. And then with this, the introduction of natural light, but also a great place for kids to kind of learn from one another, but also have meeting places and waiting for parents and celebrating their work as well. So that is an overview of what we're seeing, best practices for 21st century middle schools today. Are there any questions on any of the spaces that we've gone over before we get into the interactive exercise? All right. Seeing none. So we're going to do a fun exercise of really leaning on you guys to educate us on what is the essence of Nashua middle schools. And at your table, you should have a writing utensil, probably a marker. So we'll need to have, and a sign-in sheet. So if you haven't signed in, please sign in. I see some folks doing that now. And we'll want to have a scribe in each group.
And 50% of your grade is how well you follow directions. So.
Thank you.
All right. So you all did, you all did very well getting into tables of three. So that's, you're well on your way here. So the next thing we want you to All right, so you all did, you all did very well getting into tables of three, so that's, you get, you're well on your way here. So the next thing we want you to do is, we want you to talk amongst yourselves and come up with a word bank of phrases or words that capture the essence of what it is aspirationally we think of when we think of our middle schools. And so it can be that we have a sense of pride, forward-thinking, project-based learning. It can be, again, it's aspirational in our thinking, just descriptive words, almost brainstorming, what it, what we think of when we think of our middle schools. So does everyone, clear with that, or not? All right. Very good. And so the idea is to come up with how many? As many as you can. Fill your chart.
Five minutes of brainstorming and just put them on the board.
There's no right or wrong answer, yet. All right, go.
This is like the way we do the coffee card. Like inclusivity.
As part of this?
No, it's one of the things. After the one, I don't have much information there.
No, but you just think of it as a city. When a speech happened in elementary school, and I happened to be housed in the fifth grade pod, it was like all of us.
I think that's important in middle schools.
So if I do one big slide, am I flexibility?
You've got the marker, ma'am. Whatever.
Yeah, smaller learning is better. Yes, that's a teacher that has a large, massive.
And so our next steps here, let me get the clicker, is we're going to have each group report out the list of words or phrases that you've put on your board. If any of them need an explanation, please explain what you meant by it. And so we're going to start here with group three. Do we have a presenter for group three?
Am I just reading what we have?
If, yeah.
A lot of community.
Okay. Our first one, can you hear me?
Community, project-based learning, true teaming, well-rounded student, as in scholar, artist, athlete, blended learning, inclusivity, community service, student-based community service, and then community connections through mentors and career education, location and performance space.
Group two.
Okay, so our points were freedom of movement, freedom to create, freedom to be messy, and all that was sort of summarized into the word flexibility, so that the students have much more freedom to learn. And also then we had engaging and inclusive, welcoming and secure, meaning that the school looks very welcoming from the outside, but on the other hand, it's very secure, so the kids feel safe in their learning environment. And then outdoor learning, so the students have the ability to go outside, even though it's within a confined courtyard, and still be safe.
So you've heard a lot, a lot of community, a lot of flexibility, a little bit about its security, engaging and welcoming. Group one, I'm going to ask that one of you bring the board over here, because unfortunately I can't come to you. Or maybe I could have read them for you, make it easier, but, all right. Sure.
Wait for me.
The first thing we focused on were flexible spaces, that were kind of a lot like the other ones, both indoor and outdoor, for sports and performance and all those kinds of things. A building that's STEAM and STEM ready, lots of availability for different types of learning. Equity within both the student population, that people have the ability, all the students have the ability to have access to all the different types of facilities for multiple learning styles, and also equity building, making it a quality investment now, so that as we move into the future, if we need to redesign those spaces in 15, 20, 30 years, that still is available within our budget and within our building. And safety and security for all the students.
Thank you. So three great, great lists, definitely some overlaps, but also some unique phrases and words on each one. So with that, we now move on to the voting segment. So we're going to hand out six dots to each person, and you have six dots to vote on any board you want. Pick either the six words or phrases that you think best capture the essence of Nashua middle schools, or, we always get this question, can you power vote? Yes, if there is one thing that you are very passionate about, you can put all six stickers there if you want. So we'll give you guys a couple of minutes, and go ahead and start voting.
So now we need someone to tally up our...
If we could have one person each group write the numbers.
Yep. One person each group that's really good at counting. Good, good, good. All right, I think, I think we've got some, some numbers there. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to go through each of these, and if, if we have the same term on another board, we're going to add it, but we'll go through the first one, and our top, what are we looking at, at least our top?
Top, I'm going to shout. How about locate every?
Okay, so it sounds like inclusive, engaging, well, equity, so this, you meant equity by this?
Well, that's equal to all students, inclusive, include everybody.
Yep. So one more, can you add one to equity on team one to make it 14, take 14 to 15? Community service, student-based. Community connections, so it's about mentors, career education, and then performance space. Okay, so these numbers hold pretty true. The top one, location at nine, performance space, well-rounded student, project-based learning and community at seven. I'm going to try and read from here, because the mic doesn't go that far. Freedom of movement, so flexibility, which is really around freedom of movement, freedom to create, freedom to be messy. It looks like there's eight, eight votes on that. Anyone else have flexibility? Flexible space, so seven. So if you can add seven to your eight.
I think they're actually...
Oh, with the freedom to be messy? Okay, good point. So, so you'll, yes, nine to seven, 16 altogether. Engaging and inclusive, we've talked about, welcoming and secure. So eight, if you can add eight to your 11 to make that 19. And then outdoor learning, it looks like you guys might have something to do with, well, it's tied into your flexible space, which we've kind of already counted, but I guess, that's, that's a, I don't know if we want to count that one again, it's kind of a duplicate. Keep it where it is. Okay, so by default, we already have kind of worked through yours, but the top, top one on yours is equity. So equity at 15, but here we have a 19 and a 16, so it looks like the top three are in numerical order, our priority are welcoming, secure at 19, flexibility at 16, and then equity at 15 over on group, group one. So those are our top three words or phrases. So again, flexibility, that's freedom of movement, freedom to create, freedom to be messy, folding in a little bit of the indoor/outdoor space from that board. Welcoming and secure and equity are the three words and phrases. And so, can I get the things? So with that, we're going to move on to the next part. We're going to pass out some packets of imagery from our presentation. And so we want you to go through these images with each group and start to pick out the images that we kind of related to the design strategies that capture the essence of Pelham, oh, sorry, Nashua Slip, Nashua middle schools, and really, what are those images that you connect to? So if you flip your board over, you'll see a space to write the three words at the top. So Mark, I think, is putting together the board so we can all look at what those three words and phrases are, but working off memory, we have equity, flexibility, and welcoming and secure. Thank you. We'll pass out some dots too, so you can pin the three images that you guys pick onto the board. We'll give you about five minutes.
We're going to start with, with group two, and if we just can just briefly explain your thought process to what the image seemed to capture for you, so.
All three of them, we thought, captured flexibility and the welcoming and secure aspects, being connected to the outdoors, giving that freedom, and just being spaces that let students and faculty know, this is your space, and, and it's here for you. And I always look at it as we're setting the stage, and it's, it's ready for you. Here we looked at also the equity in terms of students having an opportunity to interact and mingle with students they may not be with normally during the day, so you have those opportunities for interactions with students who may not be in your science class, but you're still friends with them, or you play baseball with them, or whatever. So it's just this open space to do that. The flexibility here of being able to do multiple things, and then here certainly, again, this openness and, and equity and flexibility to just have a space to stand and mingle, be it indoors or outdoors. So that's what we were looking at.
Wonderful. Excellent. Very good. So we'll go to, we table three, so, all right, who's the spokesperson? You're going to go. Oh, excellent, all right.
So for ours, we were looking at the flexibility, and all of them were showing, you know, flexibility to a certain extent, where you could do different things within that space, whether it's technology or art or so on. Our biggest challenge was the equity, because for us, equity was being wheelchair accessible, special ed, different types of disabilities and so forth, and we were having trouble finding, some spaces were better for that than others, and trying to find a picture that really captured that equity piece. And then the welcoming and secure, we had, is why we picked that one entrance. It looked, you know, showing off the art in the ceiling and just the natural light and so forth, it looked very welcoming. And then we just assumed the secure would come with, as you said, being able to coordinate off different spaces and just the right way, so.
Good, excellent, great. All right. All right. Ian, are you the spokesperson here? All right, very good.
So I think similar to some of the other groups, we just expanded a little bit and picked a couple. So again, that kind of open area, just showing the flexibility, the opportunity for students to socialize or pull together as a group. We liked some of the learning communities, learning commons, in terms of that, again, flexibility of space, being able to kind of break kids out or pull them all together, depending on what, what the teachers or team was trying to do. And then I think that same image that the last group had talked about, where you have a welcoming entrance, but it's also secure and has all those measures in it.
It's always interesting seeing some overlap in the images too, from these. So that, excellent, excellent job. The next step is going to be a little more involved and require a little more of those synapses, and we're going to fast forward, I think, the slide here. There we go. Yep. So what we're going to ask you to do is now synthesize, we have, we have some words, we have some thoughts that the images conjured as well, and we want you now to start thinking about what we call the design statement. And this, this forms kind of a foundational narrative that we use to build the design around. And so the design encompasses the physical space, but encompasses the programs, the teaching and learning. And, and what we do is when we design spaces, we like to look at it and supportive of a particular vision for the, for the school. And so here's an example of one, this was actually for a design statement for a elementary school that, that was developed by the two staffs, there was a consolidation, and two staffs came together and built this design statement, and it said, "Look through the eyes of a child to see the wonders of the world." And this was a pre-K through two, and so it captured really what that area of their development was all about, and everything was awe-inspiring and wonderful and filled with just magic in their learning. And so, and it was really thinking about, about that viewpoint of, of their development. So look through the eyes of the child, see the wonders of the world. The next one is one in a school where the, there was a large component of outdoor learning and gardening and the, and the curriculum really integrated nature into it a lot. And so the design statement for that school project was a nurturing community garden where everyone grows, learns and explores. And that was sort of a metaphor of the garden for really the development of the students and, and the staff in the, in the school as well. And so, and those were built in the same model, where, where the idea was that it was built under, for them, they had, some of these root words were in that statement. And so, so the idea, we want you to, to now take, I don't know, five to plus, yeah, minutes, and we want you to start brainstorming a phrase or something that actually becomes the narrative for the, for the project, built on the work that you folks have already done. So we're going to do it by tables again, and, and this is, this is a little, a little more difficult, but you, there's a lot of educators here, there's a lot of really bright people, we know you can do it, so. So, so once again, we have an outstanding effort by groups two and three. Well, group one is finishing up. Are there other questions that people have about, about the project or, or anything, not necessarily related to the exercise that we've done, but, but in general? Yes, yep.
Location.
Location.
A lot of things about welcoming the community, being about secure and safe, welcoming the equal. You're going to build a school 15 miles out of downtown, that's not equal or welcoming downtown.
Right. So part of the things that we'll have to be very careful about as we, as we look at site or a, new versus renovation, is to look at, yeah, how much, how much space do we need for the school to adequately support the functions, where are the utilities that are available, what's the purchase cost of all that? So that all be part of the evaluation we do for each of the, each of the sites that we consider versus, new versus renovation, so.
Would you, we have a greenhouse here on this property, would that move with us? Be allowed to? I mean, is that some of the things that they would?
Yeah, so, and I'm being reminded, I need to repeat the question in case it didn't. So the question was, the first one was location, I think everyone got that. The second question is, is greenhouse. And will there be a greenhouse? Could it move, the one that's here? And the answer is, again, one of the things we'll evaluate, is there room to accommodate it on a site? And so, yeah, like, the likelihood is yes, it'd be easy enough to construct or move a greenhouse to the new one, so. Good? Yes?
So I'm a neighbor here, a former substitute teacher here and whatever. So I always feel that the outside of this building could be a lot more inviting to the neighbors, it could be more trees, benches to sit under, a way to make it half park for all the neighborhoods around here, as well as schools. So if they end up deciding to build a new school somewhere else, I would like to see this school or parts of it saved and renovated to be, you know, yoga classes in the old gym over there, the performing arts still being there, and just, you know, you could make it a really nice hub for community space if it doesn't remain a school, or maybe, I don't know, you build a smaller school within here.
Right. Yeah, so I think, I think that is yet to be determined, certainly. We, we don't know if it's new versus renovation, but I, we had the same impression thinking about its location, and it's sort of right here at, you know, at the heart of the, of the city, and so, so it really has a lot of opportunity for whatever it is, if it's a school or not, so. But that, that, I think, absolutely, we got that, so. So, and are we, are we all done? Oh, yeah, all right, great. So, well, so we're going to, we're going to pick on you guys first then, hot off the, off the press here, so we'll get all the cord up. We have a different, we have a different spokesperson this time? No? Oh, okay, all right. So who, who wants to then? All right, here we go. We got a leader.
Not from behind it.
So we came up with an engaging and energizing environment focused on diverse learners to develop well-rounded students. All that extra wordsmithing paid off.
All that, all that extra time paid off, so. Very good, very good. How about over here?
Okay.
Yeah.
Creating an environment that allows teachers and students the freedom to dream and create.
That is pretty spectacular as well. All right. Here we go.
In our learning communities within our school, we open our eyes to explore, our minds to create. minds to create, and our hearts to accept.
Boy, I know, all those are... All three of those are really amazing, and we're always astounded at the sort of outcome of this and where we end up. And it really drives what we do, because, again, the idea that we can create, we can create the sort of the body, but the soul is what we really yearn to understand, and so that's what these provide us, insight into that. So, again, thank you very, very much for coming out and working through that exercise with us. What we're going to do with those is we're going to actually, we've done a couple of things. One, we've tried to, in the past, somehow integrate all of them into a single statement, and that's one way of doing it. The other thing we've done also is we've allowed folks to vote on a statement, and so stay tuned for the follow-up on that. But they're all so great, they can stand alone, or we'll take a stab at integrating them together too, so. So that's sort of our next step with those. But they then are the mirror that we look at as we make every decision and reflect back, and how does it reflect the qualities that we've heard here tonight, so. So thank you very, very much for that. In terms of the process, and the next step in the process, we're working through gathering all that information, synthesizing it into some thoughts on the design, and that concept design starts in the summer. We think that we'll be ready to come back and share some information in the fall with everything that we're working on as part of this study phase. And so, keep your eyes open for opportunities, spread the word to the community to be plugged in, and we'll look forward to coming back and giving another presentation after the summer. So, thank you all. We'll overhear for some thoughts or questions afterwards if you want. We did it before 8 o'clock, so you can all get home for whatever you need to get home for, so, thank you.